We'd even everyone to the common council meeting for November 28, 2023. So the first thing to is to call to the order to the meeting. And second, please stand up for the place of allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you.
So next, we move to item four, public appearances for non-agenda items. Do we have anyone? Oh, roll call first, so, sorry. Roll call first.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Radifrada.
Here.
Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Alder Jetzer.
Present.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Strassmann.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You do have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. So next, on item four is public appearances for non-agenda items. Do we have anyone want to speak on non-agenda items? No? Okay, we don't have anything here, no? So the next is the Mayor Awards presentation. So I want to say thank you, everyone. I know that many of you are here for the presentation of the award, and I am very glad that so many people came today. So the Mayor's Award began in 2019 under Mayor Aaron Richardson. And Aaron, are you here? Yes, thank you. I am continuing the tradition, okay? So as an effort to recognize residents, businesses, and staff that make Fitchburg a great place to live, work, and recreate, the Mayor's Award is at an opportunity to celebrate some of the many great people in Fitchburg. They are an opportunity to bring the community together every year. So what I'm going to do is, there are a couple of categories. We have a city staff, a Fitchburg resident, a business, and I add a new category this year. It's called not-for-profit organization, that are doing some work in Fitchburg. So the process will be that I'm going to start with one other category, do an introduction, and then I'm going to present the award, and then I'm going to call the next one, and then at the end, we're going to have a recess, and during the recess, we are going to have some pictures, okay? And there are some cookies there, and we have 15 minutes, so you can mingle with council and take picture, and then that's it, okay? So the first award is the city employee. And this year, I did something different with it. We decided to ask the staff, you know, like a survey. So everyone participated, all the city staff participated, and they were the ones that nominated person. And the person on the city staff that with the most nomination was the person that, you know, we are awarding tonight. So the city staff that got most of the nomination was Peg Guzy. I know, yeah. Can you stand up? So I'm going to read something about Peg and something that some of the coworkers said about her. So Peg has been beautifying the city's grounds in 2015 as the city groundskeeper. Peg is responsible for the grounds maintenance of City Hall, the library, community center, and the city's parks. All those beautiful flowers in the numerous flower beds and the manicured boulevards and parks are thanks to the hard work of Peg. So thank you, Peg. So some of the coworkers said about her in the nomination. Peg is a very valued, hardworking, respectable person, employee. She's willing and able to do anything to help. She does an amazing job maintaining City Hall and library and other areas throughout the city. Up until this year, she did all that working, mostly nights and weekends while she is still teaching. This year, she retired from teaching and has been able to work more hours with us, willing to take on and learn new things throughout the city and fill in wherever needed. She's a such trooper, and we really appreciate her for everything that she does. Another nomination says Peg takes great pride in beautifying our campus, parks, and other area in which she works. Peg is a great person to be around, and Fitchburg is fortunate to have her on staff. Another one. She's always willing to do what needs to be done without fail and make City Hall beautiful. She takes pride in the work she is asked to do, and she is willing to help others in new or emergent situations. And lastly, she gives the city curve appeal. If caught up, she will go out and work on other park signs and small landscaping projects. She also keeps the splash pad landscaping look beautiful. So this is great thing, Peg, that all your coworkers are saying about you, so thank you and congratulate you, so. So here is Peg's thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to say something?
I couldn't do this without all the parks people that have helped me out, put up with me, taught me how to do all the different machines, Jordan for getting me out of ditches with the lawnmowers, but thank you.
No, thank you, okay? Congratulations. So Ed Kenny is selected for this service and commitment to the city of Fitchburg. His dedication and guidance toward the strategic growth of the city have been and continue to be invaluable. So where are you? Ed Kenny is a vice president in Commercial Lending and Settle Best Credit Union, where he works with the small business owners and real estate developers and investors. He served 30 years on the Fitchburg Plan Commission as vice chair, and I have the honor to, you know, work with you in Plan Commission, Ed, for two years, and about 20 years on the Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee, serving as a chair. Ed has also served on the Fitchburg Affordable Housing Tax Board, the Fitchburg Town of Madison Extraterritorial Zoning Committee, and represented Fitchburg at Capital Area Sustainable Communities. He currently serves on the Steering Committee for the Greenfield Neighborhood Plan and the Uptown Fitchburg Capstone Project. Ed is a member of the Madison Elks Lodge and serves on the housing board for his college fraternity. Ed holds a bachelor from the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and is a graduate from Edgewood High School, and he is a lifelong resident of Fitchburg. So thank you, Ed. Congratulations.
Thanks, Julia.
So you want to say something?
I have a lengthy speech prepared.
Go again.
Really, I just, I want to thank the city of Fitchburg and all the mayors that appointed me over the years, and some who probably wished that they hadn't. But it was, it was a great journey, and I'm glad to still be involved in the steering committees, and I'm always here whatever the city might need. Thanks, Julia.
And thank you very much for all your service, okay? Thank you. (applause) So I am recognizing Oak Bank as a business leader in our community because Oak Bank does more than banking. It's investing the quality of life in the Fitchburg community by supporting causes like the inclusive playground and the concert and Maquis, amongst others. So the people from Oak Bank is there, so thank you for that. Oak Bank was founded in 2000 and is celebrating this year 23 years of deep roots in the Fitchburg community. Oak Bank opened for business originally in a small office on Triverson Pike Drive and moved into its current location in December of 2000. Remaining independent and in Fitchburg has been a primary objective, and they plan to keep it that way. Bob Goldschut was a primary organizer of the bank and served as a chairman and CEO since the beginning. He fulfilled his dream of opening a bank that provides the personal touch every client that they serve. Under Goldschut's leadership, Oak Bank has grown from just an idea in 2000 into a $500 million community bank by employing 45 individuals. Oak Bank supports the growth of local businesses, helps area residents achieve their homeownership dreams, and has been instrumental in the development and prosperity of the city of Fitchburg and its surrounding community. They strive to give back by supporting over 125 local not-for-profit each year with time, talent, and donations. The banks believe that the economy of Fitchburg and Dane County will continue to be the most dynamic in Wisconsin. You can see the commitment to the community reflected in the not-for-profit they support and the relationship they maintain with their clients. They are always willing to lend a hand, even when it goes beyond the duty of a banker because at the end of the day, they are not just bankers, they are our neighbors. So congratulations to all of you. (applause) Let's see, what is this? Oak Bank.
Must be one of these two, right?
This one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I don't know if you want to mention.
Thank you. All of our associates, several who are here tonight, are pleased to play a small part in making Fitchburg the community it is. We're still the only bank headquartered in Fitchburg, and we are just pleased to have been a part of what's gone on here. So thank you very much. We're very honored by this. Thank you.
Thank you, you guys, and thank you, all of you, okay? (applause) Finally, is the new category, not-for-profit. I know, Aaron, you know, I had to do some. I hope you're okay with this. So I am recognizing the Fitchburg Historical Society for its continued contribution to the city of Fitchburg of preserving and sharing history so the next generation can learn our heritage. The Fitchburg Historical Society was established on February 15, 1987 with the motto "Histories Yesterday, Today, and Tomorrow." To this end, the Fitchburg History Society has gathered and continues to gather the story of people, events, businesses, and places that have been influenced our community. This information is easily available to the community through newsletter, two free programs each year on a specific topic of interest, recorded interviews, and especially a constantly expanding website. They are displayed in the Fitchburg Room on the second floor of the Fitchburg Library, and you can become a member of the Fitchburg Historical Society. I am a member, and I receive a lot of email with some updates when they do update to the website. They send you an email, and also, they also do a very cool, sometime, you know, like having able to participate, you know, meetings about the history of the city and the people. So thank you very much because you are preserving who we are as a community, and I am very glad that I am recognizing you, so congratulations. (applause) Congratulations.
This award is really for all the members of the Fitchburg Historical Society. They've gathered information from 12,000 years ago to the present, and their website we have is wonderful. I encourage everyone to look at it. They'll learn a lot of things, I know I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. (applause) So now, we are going to go to a recess, so we are going to take some picture, and then the council, we convene again, okay? Thank you. Do we need to have a motion?
I move to recess for 15 minutes.
All those in favor of recessing, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. Okay. Okay, council, we need a motion to back.
I move to reconvene.
To reconvene.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. So before we move to the agenda, I need to, I forgot to recognize someone that helped me to put this together, and it's Lisa. Lisa, thank you very much for your work, you know? So Lisa did all the hard work, okay? So I was presenting, but Lisa did all the hard. So thank you very much, Lisa, you know, and I know that you work also with Aaron too, so thank you, okay? Okay. Okay, so next, we move to item number five is the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Aye.
Oh, who is aye?
That's Dave.
Wait, oh, okay, okay. Sorry, Dave. Okay, so next, we move to the administrator report.
Good evening, everyone. Couple of items of note, actually, looks like I've got about seven on my list here. The book drop at the library is currently closed while a new sorter is installed. We apologize for the inconvenience for folks not being able to pull up to the side of the building and simply drop their materials in. We're hopeful in the next week or so that the new sorter will be fully operational and the book drop will reopen. For anyone considering running for an elected position next spring, nomination papers may be circulated beginning December 1st and are due to the city clerk on January 2nd. On December 4th, at 5:30 PM in the city council chambers, there will be a public open house on the Greenfield and South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plans. On December 6th, at 6:00 PM at Fire Station Number One on Lacy Road, Payne and Dolan will be holding a neighborhood meeting regarding their minor comp plan amendment for the area just to the northwest of the intersection of Commerce Park Drive and Lacy Road. On December 11th, at 6:00 PM at the town of Verona Hall at 7669 County Highway PD, there will be a public information meeting regarding the Fitchrona Road reconstruction project that is tentatively planned for 2025. Property tax bills are anticipated to be mailed the week of December 11th, as is their typical timeframe for mailing to residents and property owners. And then, last announcements are related to the senior center. They have Giving Tree at the senior center this year. You're encouraged to stop by the center and pick up a gift tag off the tree. Each tag has gift ideas for a senior in need, and if you happen to know of a senior in need, you're able to nominate that senior to receive a gift by speaking with one of the social workers at the senior center, simply by calling 2704290. What has become a bit of a tradition here the last few years for the city of Fitchburg, the annual holiday lights tour will be December 15, 16, and 17, and the senior center is also looking for volunteers to drive seniors who no longer are able to drive to see some of those holiday lights. You can volunteer to drive on any or all of those three dates mentioned, and volunteers will pick up and drop off seniors at their homes. For more information on volunteering for that particular event, you can contact Mandy Miller, our volunteer coordinator at the senior center, at 2704290. Any questions for me?
Okay, no question. Okay, so thank you, Chad. Next, we move to commission and committee reports. We will start with Plan Commission.
Just one moment. I move to postpone indefinitely CS 248222.
Second.
So this is something that's been postponed multiple times. It's basically a requirement in order to have occupancy. It's figuring out the final easements and such. It's just been delayed because it's not required until occupancy, and the building isn't complete yet, so we're gonna, instead of continuing to postpone it, we're just gonna postpone indefinitely, and then the developer will bring back the final, the final one when it's actually prepared and ready to go, so.
Okay, all those in favor of postponing CSM 2482-22, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose?
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay, thank you. Okay, I had to remind you that. Next one.
I move approval of Resolution R 23223, approving final plat request FP 252823 by Sherry Yu, agent for AY Development LLC, to obtain approval for a final plat in Terra Vesa that will subdivide one outlot into 10 buildable lots on property located off Lacy Road.
Did Plan Commission approve?
Yes.
What is this?
Yeah, so this is actually something that was approved back in 2022, but there were delays, and because it's been more than a year, we have to reapprove it. So it's been, it's already been through kind of a lot of overview by both plan and council. They've actually completed some of the conditions that was approved previously, so the conditions are fewer for this one, but it's pretty straightforward. It's going to be 10 attached homes in Terra Vesa.
Any questions, comment?
Yeah, just, they're going to be all attached, like the row houses in Swan Creek?
I believe so, yes.
Great. Because I was noticing these are only like 30-foot wide lots.
Yeah, I believe it's like a row of townhouses.
Deanna is also online, so she can comment. Bill?
Yeah, everyone, yes, they are row houses, townhouses.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
The agenda packet talks about medium-density residential. That's capped at five, or five to nine units per acre. This is 10 units on 0.6 acres. Is that the correct zoning?
Deanna?
This is the correct zoning. It's actually smart code, and so the, we, it's not important to follow with that medium density or low density under the smart code zoning.
This is like a T4 in a smart code?
This is T4.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other question? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-232-23, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? The motion carries.
And I have a couple of things just to report from the meeting. So I did, we did want to note for this resolution that we just approved, Deanna included the memorandum from the plan department. It hasn't always been included in the packet, like with the packet materials and the council, even though the memo is available to the public, so I just wanted to flag that because we're going to start seeing those in the packet, and thank you for making that happen, Deanna, because the plan department memos are always extremely useful. We met on November 21st, and a couple of things that we did, we did an ADR on the One Energy Solar Farm that we approved last week, the conditional use permit last week, that's on Burn Road. We did an ADR for the One Neck Expansion, that's that data storage facility on Nobel Drive, so that's underway soon. We also did an ADR on the new Hartung Fields project, so they're going to start building that in the near future, and it's, we did an ADR on that to kind of get that rolling. And let's see if there's anything else. Oh, yes, and they also did, the plan department has an intern that's a class, someone that's in UW's department that's doing a class on, I believe it's on urban design, landscape design, and she's doing a project related to Uptown Fitchburg, so around the Terra Vesa area, the, you know, where Lacy meets Cheryl Drive, kind of that area. And they did kind of this great meeting where they talked about visioning for downtown Fitchburg, uptown Fitchburg, and what that could look like in terms of walkability, and I believe Alder Allen was on the committee, along with Carol Poole from the Plan Commission, and then some other representatives from developers that were in the area, and so it sounded like it was a really great conversation. And so Deanna presented some of the materials at Plan Commission. It was really inspiring to think about how can we make walkable spaces that's a little bit more, had a different feel than other parts of Fitchburg that we don't naturally have in our, in our city currently. So really cool presentation, and then I'll just echo that we do have that Steering Committee Open House on December 4th for the Greenfield and South Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plans. That'll be a really nice meeting to see what's happening on those, those two big projects. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we move to Board of Public Works. So Bill, are you going to take over this?
Yes. I will move approval of Resolution R 16923, approving agreement for subdivision improvements in the plat of Hartung Fields.
Second.
Okay, so the question is, there are a couple of, I think Public Works.
Public Works made an amendment.
We are moving this forward with the original.
So we need a clarification if you're moving the motion to approve as amended by Board of Public Works or as was originally submitted.
How would we like to approve? Plan Commission approved the original, correct?
Yes.
But I guess I'll move it as amended by Public Works for the sake of discussion.
Can you explain? Okay, oh, we need a second.
A second.
Okay, can you explain what is this and what, what did you amend, guys?
Yeah, so what, this is, at our last council meeting on the 14th, we conditionally approved Resolution R 16323, which is the Hartung Fields plat. The land division ordinance requires that the subdivider enter into a contract with the city for installation of public improvements. And the specific amendment that we made is listed in the packet. I didn't get myself here.
Would you quit pressing my button? Thanks. We're on the opposite side, press, and you, you press the second after me, and I'm off mic. Sorry about that, Scott, so thank you for your assistance. I mean, people wanted to silence me for years, so you're all over it. He keeps, he keeps doing that, too.
So Amendment 1 is in paragraph 1.01, according to this particular document. That is incorrect. It's 1.06. Yep, and that removes engineer in the title to read plans submitted to the city, and that adds the Board of Public Works in the first sentence to read subdivider shall submit to the city engineer and the Board of Public Works for review and approval, plans and specifications for storm waters at pertinences, easy for me to say, and stormwater facilities. And then Amendment 2 was in paragraph 4.01 of the agreement to amend the mowing schedule in the second sentence to change the first mowing from May to on or after June 1st. And I sent an email to the council this afternoon with a staff memo that had been prepared in regards to the amendments that were made at Board of Public Works that summarized staff concerns related to those amendments, to at least Amendment 1.
So before we move to the questions and comments, I have a couple of people that registered to speak. One is Nate Hoyt. He wishes to answer questions, okay? Okay. Then we have Dan Day, also representing the developer. He wishes to answer some questions if needed. And then Jonathan Stevens, also representing the developer. He wishes to speak in support of the matter and answer questions if needed. I don't know if you want to make any comments, guy, before we?
I yield.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we are open for, for council comments and questions. Yeah, see, okay, go ahead, Jay.
All right, well, since you sent this email at 4 o'clock this afternoon, and I was working all the way up until the time of the meetings tonight, I have no idea what your email said, and I just tried to open the attachment and it won't open. So I guess the only question that I have is, that language in 1.06 has been the language we've used for years, so why are we changing it now, and is this going to be a change permanently going forward?
So, okay, so you're asking the question to the So, okay, so you're asking the question to the Public Works representative. Bill?
Well, maybe I may have been asking Chad since it was his memo that I wasn't able to read.
We have team two, what is team? Team, yeah, okay. I don't know, team.
So the, certainly the amendment at this point in time amends the specific agreement related to this project. I don't want to speak to the intent of the Board of Public Works if the intent was is to make this a permanent change. However, you will note in the memo, if you're out to open it at some point in time, that staff has taken a look at this particular amendment. And the recommendation would be to leave the technical review and approval of plans and specifications with the city engineer as originally drafted in the proposed subdivision improvement agreement. This language has been utilized in subdivision improvement agreements since at least 2012 based upon city staff research. And we've executed at least 49 SIAs utilizing this language since 2012. In regards to some of the other comments that were raised during the Board of Public Works meeting, the ordinance 40-892 places the operation of the stormwater utility under the review by city council and makes the director of Public Works responsible for the maintenance and management of the stormwater utility under the direction of the Board of Public Works. And its staff, and when I mention staff, I'm referring to Tim and Valerie Zisman, the city attorney. This review and approval is not a general direction slash policy decision, but rather one of a technical analysis. The city engineer is a qualified licensed and registered professional engineer with the expertise and technical knowledge to review and approve the submitted stormwater documents. And current Pittsburgh ordinances do not require members of the Board of Public Works to have a background in engineering, construction, stormwater management, or other technical background to review stormwater plans, specification reports, and calculations. Tim, is there anything, or Valerie, you wanted to add to that?
I do not.
I'm happy to answer questions if there are any, but I don't have anything to add, no.
Okay, thank you. Gabriela?
I'm gonna make a motion to remove that amendment number one from the Board of Public Works. And the reason why is I just, I, like was mentioned in the memo, I trust city engineers to make an assessment and make recommendations to both committees that advise the council and the council. And I think that the technical expertise should stay with the experts. And I trust city staff to make those assessments. So I'd like to keep it within the city engineer as originally drafted.
Any other question? I think that, you know, I agree with removing the amendment two. I think one thing that we need to remember that the Public Works Board role is to make policy decision. They, I don't think that they, you know, the technical skill, we need to leave that to the engineers in the city. I know that we have some engineer in Public Works, but those technical calculations should be done internally with our city staff. So any other comment? Okay, so what we are gonna? Okay, so now we are voting on the amendment option. So all those in favor of that? Removing the amendment number, what is?
One.
One. Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So now?
I do have one question.
Okay.
Is there any issue with Public Works about changing the language from May to June, on or after June 1st? Is that a no-mo-May situation, kind of?
Yeah, Tim and I had discussed this. There was no objection from Public Works. And also, we spoke with the developer and they don't have any objection to that either.
It's an interesting thing to think about for future, to make it more flexible so that they don't have to do it in May. I think that's valuable to make a more permanent change to those agreements.
So now we need a motion, oh, Jay.
Yeah, so this particular document is something that's, it's like boilerplate for us. It's copied and pasted. So if, so that we don't have to change this again, can we just change the boilerplate document to June 1st?
Okay, so now we are, we are gonna vote on the resolution as amended. When amendment two. Okay. All those in favor of those changes, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, great. Thank you. So next, we, Bill, next one.
I move that we postpone resolution R 19723 for the approval of the amended traffic management process to the January 9th council meeting.
Second.
So we have a person online that, because he has been waiting, Jay Huckmuth. Do you want to speak, Jay? You have three minutes. We are postponing this, but I don't know if you want to, yeah, okay.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I just want to mention that we're hoping that, we're really glad to hear that this item got moved back a bit. And we would hope that perhaps a public hearing could be held on these proposed changes at or before the January 9th meeting. Sue Easterday and myself have submitted some comments today in an email on the proposed revisions. I will not speak to that this evening, but we appreciate the decision to move this back to the January 9th meeting. And thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Jay. So Chad, do you want to add anything else to this?
There was a comment mentioned about a public hearing. Obviously, we do have some statutory requirements to actually publish a notice of public hearing, as has been referenced in conversations here. That's typically only done where statutorily required, such as for the budget process and things like a minor comp plan amendment. So I'd be concerned about creating a precedent on doing a public hearing for other agenda items that are not necessarily required. And there have been a number of opportunities for folks to share their feedback and continue to share their feedback up until January 9th, either via email, direct outreach to council, or attendance at Board of Public Works and the city council meetings to talk about their feedback with the plan.
Okay, all those in favor of postponing, oh, Jay, okay.
Yeah, what is, Bill, what is the plan to happen over the next month and a half?
Well, okay, so the reason that it got postponed was because a couple of people were caught a little bit off guard with the, you know, with the agenda packet and the changes that were made. There were also a few typos and stuff in the, in the, in the new document. And so we decided to postpone that to our December 4th meeting to rediscuss. And then, just given the holiday situation, Ross is assuming that we were gonna move this to the January 9th meeting.
Yeah, the other thing, Jay, is Ross is putting together a memo for the council to explain what are the changes, you know, in a comparative way, because it's kind of confusing if you read. So that information is gonna be more clear.
Okay, I love clarity.
Okay.
And that memo will be included in the Board of Public Works packet for the December 4th meeting. Excellent.
Is it possible, is it possible to refer this to transmission and transit since there will be a meeting before? Originally, we didn't, we didn't refer because there wasn't gonna be a meeting, but.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know if we need to do a motion, but I'll make a motion to refer this to transmission and transit.
Second.
Second. Oh, Joe, got it already.
It's an honor.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving that this resolution go to TTC, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay.
Aye.
One, eight, okay. Yes, so now, so we are ready to, okay, so now we are voting on postponing the resolution R-197-23 until the January 9th council meeting.
Move to postpone.
It's already been moved.
All those in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So this was, okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on. I will move approval of resolution R 20523 in agreement with Bauer Builders, Inc. for the city hall front desk remodel.
Second.
Did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved.
Okay, thank you. What is this?
This project was originally bid back in May. And at the time, only one bid was received, and it was significantly higher than the engineer's estimate. So we held off. That bid was rejected by resolution R 13323. The rebidding of the project took place in October. And we got two bids, one of which was a bit lower than the engineer's estimate. So that's what we are considering this evening.
Okay, any comments, questions? No? So it was like $100,000 less, isn't it? Yeah.
Right. Well, the engineer's estimate was 95K. The winning bid here is, I think, 88 or 89K.
Yeah, but the one.
The previous one, yes, was.
Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-20523, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you, Dave. So next, we move to the next one.
Yes, I move approval of resolution R 20823, creating and updating the water disconnection policy.
Second.
Did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved.
Thank you. Okay.
So subsequent to the Town of Madison attachment, staff has been looking for ways to make the disconnection policy more efficient and equitable while staying compliant with the Public Service Commission. And it was decided that rather than having staff spend time going out and actually physically disconnecting, which, you know, takes a lot of time and effort, instead, when people fail to pay their water bill, the amount will accrue and appear on their property tax bill. And that includes any penalties that are accrued as well.
Any questions, comment? No? Okay. All those in favor of resolution R-208-23, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you, Dave. So next, we move to the next one.
I'll move approval of resolution R 20923, the North Fish Hatchery Road Hub, Phase 1, at 2220 Traceway Drive, design concept amendment.
Second. We should clarify if you're recommending approval as amended by the Board of Public Works or as presented.
Yes, as amended by Public Works.
Okay, okay, and Public Works only approved amendment number two.
Correct.
So Finance Committee, what did you do?
We approved the entire package and moved it forward, so.
So you approved number two, three, and four?
I believe so. We didn't, we didn't break it out, so.
Okay, good. Good to know. Okay.
Amendment four, I think, was informational only.
Oh, Missy, do you want to clarify something?
I would, if that's okay. So at the Finance Committee, we approved the resolution as included in the packet by staff, which only included amendment two and three. It did not include amendment four.
Two and three, okay, okay. Two and three, and this one, two, okay. Okay, so I know that Adam's here. Adam, do you want to speak on this? Or Scott? I don't know. Okay, okay. So you're gonna explain this, Bill?
Sure. So there were two amendments in the resolution, numbered two and three. Amendment number two is the one that the Board of Public Works approved. And this is an additional $64,000 for design and construction work just due to project delays and inflation. Amendment three is the amendment that the Public Works did not approve for an additional $55,000 in design and estimated $91,000 in construction for footings to be installed around the ball court for potential later construction of a cover that would, that would go over the entire ball court.
So I don't know if anyone to want to comment, or. Shannon, and Joe, okay. Shannon, you go first.
Well, I don't understand why we're doing the footings if we're not, we voted on not doing the cover. Is there something missing?
Yes, because we are, yes, because eventually the idea is to incorporate the cover, because most of our shelters, the big shelters, they have cover. And the idea is in the future to create the footing for the future to add that. Eventually, you know, that corridor is growing. We have more developing coming. And those parks in lieu of, Park on Liu will be used in the future to, you know, to fund that cover. So I don't know if you guys want to explain your rationale.
All right, so the reason that it's here tonight is that if, Adam, Sarah, Deputy City Administrator, I think I've met most of you, possibly not you, all the persons for Aspen. The reason it's here tonight is because we are beginning the construction design process of this. If there ever was a desire by the council to add this structure in the future, if we don't put those footings in today, we'll be ripping up the parking lot. We'll be ripping up the court. We'll be ripping up the site again. So it's not a, you can never do it. It's just you'll be ripping out things that you just installed as part of the project. So if there ever is a desire to do the hard cover, the time is now to install those footings. Otherwise, to redig that up, you're gonna close the whole thing down. You're gonna rip out assets that you just paid to install. So that's why it's here tonight. So if you don't approve it, for all intents and purposes, you're probably not gonna do that for the next 15, 20 years.
I have a couple, before we move forward, I have a couple of, receive a couple of emails from residents. And you also received that. So one is from Christopher Saina. He is from the Parks, he's a member of the Park Commission. And he's on support, he said, "I am ready to voice my support of resolution R-209-23, which will amend the plans for the hub project to include footings for the future construction of a roof structure." Park Commission debated this roof structure thoroughly. Although we were initially taken aback by the expense, many of us felt it was a valuable addition to the hub project that will increase usable space, provide flexibility, and make this park and facility an even greater asset for our community. I believe that including the footing work will work during the initial construction phase is a wise long-term plan which will ultimately save the city money and headaches. And then I received another one from a former alder, Tony Hartman. Dear elect official, I just want to add my support for the city investment in the hub. While on the council, SIDA, and as a part of the other planning effort, I think I have more than a passing understanding of what is at stake. You need to do everything you can to support this ongoing initiative. At this specific point, getting the footings installed for future infrastructure seems the least that we can do. With all the development in North Fish Hatchery and the growing needs in that neighborhood, the hub must remain a priority. And then we received a letter from Angela Kinderman. She's the president of the Pittsburgh Chamber of Commerce. And she sent a letter practically that the entire board of directors is behind this resolution with all amendments. They support the whole thing, so. You can read the letter. And we received another from Hobart Linda, and also in support of this resolution. She's part of the co-leader of the City Madison Leopold Arbor Hills Neighborhood Resource Team. And we have worked with Pittsburgh and many area community groups on Leopold Initiative. Your city's great investment in this hub is a direct response to this wonderful community wishes and needs. Kids are primary, kids, they are the primary stakeholders that have. that have... They have spoken, and the hub will be a place they can make their own, and they will be able to safely play. So... That's it. Okay, so it's open to discussion. Who's going first? Jay?
So if I'm understanding this memo correctly, we would approve either Amendment 3 or Amendment 4, but not both of them, correct?
Well, if you'd approve Amendment 2 and Amendment 4, it wouldn't include Amendment 3.
Because... So what I'm not understanding is, it looks like Amendment 4 includes some sort of construction administration. I presume that means some of the design work for the shelter.
The covered structure along with the piers, design and engineering of the piers.
So Amendment 3 doesn't include that piece. So then I wonder how you go about designing footings for a shelter cover that you haven't designed?
Well, in that... That's the additional cost that's going to go into engineering, because you're right, Jay. You have to pretty much design the covered structure in order to design the piers that are going to support the covered structure.
So why is there a $20,000 difference between Amendment 3 and Amendment 4?
Twenty, there's fifty...
Well, it says the... Oh, it's a... No, I'm sorry. It's a $55,000 difference.
That's also the construction administration of it, too. So ultimately, Number 4 is you're building it as well. So as part of that, they're going to have to obviously oversee that part of the construction as well, too. So you'd be paying for that.
But in Amendment 3, I presume that must include some design of the actual shelter.
Absolutely.
It would have to, because it's a low...
So Amendment 4 simply includes the administration cost for actually doing it, which we might not do right now.
Correct. I mean, ultimately, you know, it includes bidding, includes everything else as well, too.
Gabriela?
So I would like to make a motion to add Amendment 3 back in to the resolution.
Second.
And the reason I'm... So the argument that I'm going to make for the footings is, you know, I understand why the council turned down the cover the first time, because it's a huge cost. And the project was already a big cost. And so the priority, obviously, is to get the project up and running. But I do think that as we redevelop that corridor, we're going to get a lot of park improvement fees coming in, and we can only use those fees on new facilities. So as that funding comes in, I think there would be an opportunity there to use that funding for the... I mean, it's not taxpayer money, right? It's developer money. We could use it to create that shelter over the hard court. And I understand why we can kick the can down the road, because we don't have that money in hand right now. But I think that there might be a time when we want to add that. And so I think having the footings just puts us in a good place. There is park funds available for it. Misty confirmed that at Finance. There's plenty of park funds available for it right now. And I think it just saves us money down the line and gives us flexibility if we do want to use some of those developer fees to add that amenity in the future.
Joe, do you want to...
No, I initially wanted you to read comments, but I agree with Walter Gerhart.
Jay and Jim?
I do want to point out, based on Gabriela's comments, that a couple of years ago, we all sat up here and had a developer come to us telling us that they should get development credits. They should get park dedication credits for building a building that never paid park dedication fees ever. So while we're going through the process of hashing that out, which I understood was supposed to be discussed among staff and then something coming to the council, I don't... Obviously, if you recall that discussion, I don't support giving park dedication credits to a developer who never paid park dedication fees to begin with. And we're going to need those park dedication fees for something else, for other things as we move forward. So just a thought that we need to keep in mind while we're talking about money that we may spend in the future that we may not have if we give it away as park dedication credits.
Okay. Any other...
Can I speak now, Mayor?
Who is... Dave, wait. Jim first, and then you, okay?
Why did... Why did Public Works deny the amendment?
I think it was... Some members of the board were concerned with the additional cost. I personally am a little concerned for the safety of the people who are trying to play ball on that court and have to dodge those steel I-beams and concrete footings. I'm not sure how we can have an open shelter where... As far as I'm aware, there's no other covered ball court in the city. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I'll also note that on the community building here, there is, on the north side, what appears to be about a 30 by 45-foot covered area there, which is roughly the same size as the shelter at McKee Farms Park, and I believe also about the same size as the one at Greenfield. Much smaller than the one that we're proposing that might go over the ball court. But I'm just wondering if you could say a few words about that.
Actually, to your point in regards to the piers and the pillars, they'll be designed in a manner to make sure that they're safe for the people that are participating on the hard court, so they won't interfere with that activity.
I'm just wondering how that's physically implemented. I mean, are they like...
Okay, we have the architect here. Can you... Do you want to clarify some of this comment? Because you are the expert, so... Can you say your name and company?
I'm Mike Zilke with Enberg Anderson. So when we first designed this up, we brought up the schematic design level, and there are still many things that need to be worked out at that point. But right now, what we are planning for is about a 7-foot, 8-foot distance between the out-of-bounds lines for the basketball courts. Basketball court would be a high school grade dimensions on there, and we'd have about 7 to 8 feet on the perimeter before you get to the columns through there. So we feel that's kind of a sufficient amount if you are playing... Excuse me. On that court to have enough distance between what you're playing. It'll be about 10 feet to the pickleball end line to any of these columns, and these columns are spaced out about 25 feet in between.
And is this... I mean, is this design implemented elsewhere in the state, in the country? And, I mean...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's plenty of covered courts. In fact, I was just down in Florida, and there was down a tent-like structure that had kind of a similar kind of an option, and their piers were actually like 5-foot to the out-of-bounds lines, which I think is not enough. But there's a lot of these... You know, the inspiration came from New York. There's a lot of them down in their old railroad yards. They have a lot of covered structures that are out there. So it works for a great thing for keeping, you know, obviously, the rain out on the ball courts, but it's also kind of a shaded structure for... You know, it's not intended just for basketball. I believe it's intended for multi-use, whether it's an outdoor amphitheater or a, you know... Any kind of setup that you would want to do outside. So I think it's more of a... Not just for basketball, but it's more of a multi-use covered structure.
Do you have any other question?
What's the height inside there? I mean, if somebody's trying to make a 3/4 court shot or something, are they going to smack into the rafters?
No. Right now, at the lowest point, is about 21 feet, and it has a slight taper to it. So it rises up to about... Off the top of my head, about 24 feet on the outside of it. So yes, if they throw a full court and do kind of a rainbow shot, you probably will hit it at that point. But anywhere kind of shooting from maybe half-court or a 3-point line shouldn't be any distance. A lot of the standards right now, your minimum standards for basketball are 20 feet. Goes anywhere up to 25 feet in there. But that's another detail that we'd like to... You know, if it moves forward, we'd like to revisit that and look at these dimensions. So like I said, we brought this up to kind of a schematic level to get the design and the feel and kind of that. But everything needs to be sized up from there, and we have to kind of revisit the whole design to make sure it fits and make sure all these dimensions are appropriate for the sport.
Who has... Jim?
The architect answered my question.
Oh, okay. Dave, do you have a question?
I'm just going to add a comment. Irritated this is even on. We voted this down. A specific question came up. Well, should we still design this? And that was voted down when this came in. Now, we're spending millions of dollars on this already. This was voted down already. I would like to go maybe in the backyard of Tony Hartman's house to find that money tree, because it does not seem like there's any spending initiative that he is not championing. But we voted this down. This will be a wonderful facility. And I would add that basketball is not the preferred sport of the majority of young people that are living in that area. You know, it's soccer. So this isn't needed, and we never have enough park dedication money for other things. It seems like we're always short. So I don't buy that, oh, this is the only thing we can use the park dedication money on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Okay, so what do we have on the table?
Gabriela's amendment to the amendment. I'm sorry, to the amendment to the amended motion.
Quick comment, please.
Oh, Angela. Sorry, yeah, you're the...
Sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, I just have a really quick comment, and that's that, obviously, you've all read the letter, and the board is in support of the full funding of the project to our best of our abilities. And we really see the hard court... Well, it may be an opportunity for basketball or other sports. It really is... I don't think we should limit our vision. And the reason for the hard court surface and the future covered structure is not just for sports activities, but economic development opportunities. Markets can be held under those covered structures, other networking events, other tourism conferences or attractions. So I really think that we're limiting the vision and the opportunity when we're just talking about basketball or something. You know, we're not really just building a basketball court. And so I hope people take that into consideration, and I think it's really wise to consider putting the footings in now for the opportunity in the future. So that's just our opinion.
Thank you, Angela. So, okay, Gabriela?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, too, in sort of response to Dave's comments, I mean, the money being used is park improvement fees, so we're not talking about taxpayer money. I would certainly respect the argument if you were pulling from the tax levy, but I think it's a different story when we're talking about developer money. And when we have difficulty funding parks, it's because we're not creating new amenities, so we can't use improvement fees. We have to use other sources of money. Like for the Tower Hill Shelter, that's not a new amenity, so we can't use park improvement fees, which is going to always be irritating to me that that's not possible, but that's just the way it is. So, you know, anyway, just want to make that point.
Jay?
Yeah, since we have the architect here, I presume that this kind of footing is going to go down below the frost line, right? How deep would you normally make that?
Well, typically, they'd be 4 feet. You know, typically, we go down 4 feet to the top of the footing, and then you have the base of it as well that goes down. So that is pretty standard.
Okay. Now, we talked about the difficulty of trying to add these footings later after the court's there. But I presume these footings are concrete, right?
Yes.
So they're going to outlast the court material by at least, you know, some measurable amount of time.
They should.
So presumably, we'll have to replace the court before we would have to replace the footings again.
Correct. And it depends on how we do this. And we may... There's an option to put in a concrete surface now. There's an option to go with an asphalt surface as it was part of, you know, the Second Amendment of this project. So there's two different ways we can do that. Again, we kind of want to go back and look what are the best advantages for this project moving forward and, you know, where it comes out tonight with the council, figure out what our best move is to go forward, both economical for the project and just how it all worked that way.
Well, even if you went with concrete, I mean, flat concrete's still going to have to be replaced long before the footings will. So the question that I was actually driving at, which was not... Which was... You went off on an interesting tangent, but... The question I was actually driving at is, will it be difficult to replace the surface without disturbing the footings or the cover if we end up building the cover?
Not the surface. The surface will be, you know, that's more grading part of it. And, you know, the piers for it, again, we still need to design what the size of it is and all that. But the footings will be down farther. They'll have some piers that come up along Traceway that do stick out of the ground a little bit. The ones on the backside envisioned will be maybe 8 inches above the ground. And if we do Amendment 3, we'll have to think of a way to kind of cap this and make this look nice for the time being. But the surface in between would be a lot easier to do the plan for, because we are just talking about a gravel base and concrete that goes on top of it. So that part... If we don't do the piers now and you do it later, that's where you have to start tearing up some of the asphalt, the concrete that's around there. Big trucks come on there for construction-wise, and that's the concern on some of that as well. So we're just trying to eliminate some of that collateral damage that happens down the road.
Well, I think you're answering a different question than the one I asked.
Yeah.
The question that I asked is, will we, we be able to replace the surface?
Yes.
Once the piers are in place?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, if, if we stay with the smaller court and asphalt court, that's gonna be off, you know, probably be a smaller dimension than the, than when we have the covered structure. So removing that won't be an issue and replacing it will have minimal, no impact on the piers at all.
Groovy.
Okay, so, um, any other comment? Okay, so, okay, I want to be.
We're voting on the amendment to the amendment.
What is that? I don't know.
We're adding amendment three back into the resolution.
Okay, so, so we are adding amendment three to the resolution and we need to, not yet. Okay, so.
Request for roll call, Mayor.
Okay, roll call. So you know what you are voting? Are you, you know, we are adding number three, okay? Okay.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Jettzer?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassmann?
No.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. So, thank you. So now we are, um, so now we need a two-third vote to approving the resolution as amended.
Correct. That's because of the budget amendment that's required.
Yeah, because it's a budget amendment, we need two-thirds. So, okay, so, okay, let's do roll call and, you know, we're ready to vote.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Jettzer?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassmann?
No.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you very much. So we are moving forward with the footings. Thank you. Thank you, Adam and Scott. Okay, so where we are now? Oh, Bill, you need to.
Yeah, there's one more resolution from Public Works. However, it's contingent on a couple items from New Business under item 10A, 3 and 5. So I would like to move, I would like to move that we move those resolutions up ahead of, uh, number six here. So that would be resolutions R-22323 and R-22723.
Second.
All those in favor of, you know, of making those changes, say aye.
Aye.
And your opposed, the motion carries. So, okay. Okay. Okay, Bill, what is, this is vote of public call. Okay, okay.
Yeah, uh, so the first one to consider is resolution R-22323. And I said that, Gabriela?
Yeah, I'm gonna make the motion. Uh, I'm gonna move approval of resolution R-22323, accepting public sidewalk easements on lots 316 through 341 and outlots 75 and 77 in the third addition to Taravessa as amended by Plan Commission.
Second.
Um, the amendment, and I can, I can explain this, I guess the, uh, this is, some public sidewalks were built on private property, so they're dedicating the land to us because they're public sidewalks. Um, and so it, this was clarifying, that, that's, that's what this resolution does. The amendment was just clarifying because there were some inconsistencies about which lot was the end point of the sidewalk. So the amendment was just to allow staff to clarify that in the final resolution to make sure that we had the, the lot numbers correct.
Uh, did Public Works approve, sorry?
Public Works approved.
Plan Commission?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments, question for Gabriela?
So did the lot numbers actually get clarified?
I.
Tim?
Deanna? No, Deanna, I believe. I just think the language is still in the same in the council packet as it was in the Plan Commission packet, so I just want to make sure there's flexibility.
Hi. Um, the language that came to Plan Commission was correct, um, in the resolution and in the back documents. So, um, but staff, staff confirmed that everything is correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-223-23, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Next one.
Next one is resolu, I will move approval of resolution R-22723, approving First Amendment to the Agreement for Subdivision Improvements in the Platte of the Third Addition to Taravessa.
Second.
Okay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Okay, what is this?
Uh, there are some paths in the Third Addition to Taravessa that don't meet the conditions of the subdividing, subdividing agreement. Public Works and the Fire Department came up with an alternate design to accommodate fire access and avoid reconstruction of those paths, which go through three outlots in Taravessa. Um, and there's an, in addition, the smart code requires mid-block cross, mid-block path crossings to be eight feet wide rather than 10 feet wide. Um, so the agreement for this development needs to be amended, um, to, uh, you know, based on the, the Public Works and Fire Department alternate design for the paths and then also for the, the path crossings.
Any questions? Comments? No? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-227-23, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. Next one.
Okay, so we are back up to seven B6. I move approval of resolution R-21423, accepting subdivision improvements in the Third Addition to Taravessa Plan.
Okay. Okay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Okay.
Um, the city engineer has inspected and conditionally approved the subdivision improvements within the Third Addition to Taravessa. Um, and in our Public Works meeting, uh, Tim had said there were a few punch list items that were left to address and, uh, those were the two items as, as far as I'm aware that we, we just pulled up out of the New Business. Um, so, Tim, unless there's anything else, I think we're ready to, uh, consider this resolution.
Yeah, the, the punches, items left in the dress, so we're good.
Okay, any questions? No? All those in favor of resolution R-214-23, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Bill. So now we move to Park, uh, Park Commission. Dave? No?
Other, nothing to report on, on ours.
Okay.
Our meeting is next week.
Okay, thank you, no report. Okay. Library Board?
I move approval, I move approval of resolution R-204-23, amending the 2023 library fund budget utility costs. And I see that, it's pretty straightforward, but I see that Wendy's online, so I'll let her explain the resolution.
Second.
Okay, did the Library Board approve?
Yes.
Did the Finance Committee approve?
Yes, the Finance, the Finance Committee approved.
Okay, thank you. So what is this, Jim?
Well, since we were having issues with the chiller.
Oh, Wendy's.
Wendy's up there.
Hi, Wendy.
Hello, hello. So this is just moving some money. Um, we're obviously having some problems with our chiller. Um, the planned replacement is to happen in the spring. Typically, we would reduce the heat in the library overnight, kind of like you would at home with a, a programmable thermostat, um, but because the chiller is struggling to maintain temperatures, we're not able to do that, so we are just gonna overrun our, um, utility budget for the year. So we're just moving some money that we had, um, unexpected revenue and interest income, so we're just moving that, um, to the appropriate account.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Uh, this one required two-thirds of the vote, so we are doing roll call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart? Aye. Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Jettzer?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassmann?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
So next we move to Commission on Aging Well.
We have no report.
No report. Resource Conservation Committee?
Um, no report.
TTC?
We will meet next on December 14th.
Okay. Sida?
Nothing to report. We meet next week.
Okay, thank you. Ag and Rural Affairs Committee?
Uh, yes, we met last week, I think it was the 21st. Uh, one item on the agenda, and that was the discussion of the, the ADR for the proposed solar field, uh, on the Adam Gile property, so, which was approved.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, Bicycle Committee?
Um, our next meeting is December 5th at 7:30.
EMS Commissioner?
No, no report.
Healthy Neighborhood Committee?
Our meeting is next week, I think.
Okay. Um, House Advisory Committee?
We will meet next on December 11th and we'll be discussing the notes that people took on our neighborhood walkabouts.
Okay. Landmark Preservation Commission?
No report.
Tree Advisory Committee? Oh, no, you're not meeting until January, is it?
Right.
Uh, next, Police Facility Oversight Committee? I know that we have here an update by project engineer Paul Woodrow. He's gonna be doing this on December 12th. But Jim, do we have any update?
Yes, and we had a meeting last night. Um, it was pretty well attended, um, and I thought it went, um, very, very well. Um, I did send the PowerPoint out to everyone in your emails, so you should have, um, what was discussed, plus, um, you know, pay attention to the project timeline and the milestones there. Um, and that's about it, unless anyone has any questions.
Um, it'll be on Fact TV, correct?
Yes, it's out there already.
Yes, great.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Um, so now we move to the Standing Committees Report. Um, we'll start with Finance Committee.
Okay, very good. Motion to, uh, for approval of resolution R-206-23, purchase of interview room recording equipment.
Second.
Finance Committee approved, and we have Lieutenant Hartwell, uh, speaking this evening to decide them.
Good evening. Uh, this is a request to purchase, uh, recording equipment to replace equipment. We have four rooms. Uh, we are statute required to record in, uh, suspect, victim and witness interviews. And this, uh, equipment will transition with us, uh, to the new facility and is compatible with our existing, um, software that we have for our body cameras and squad cameras.
And this one, this is a project that was included in the ARPA TID investment plan, so, and we need two-thirds of the vote, okay? Because it's an amendment, so. Any questions? Bill?
Uh, yeah, just a question on some of the numbers. The memo says four cameras, but the, it also lists seven cameras, four recorders and three microphones. Can you just kind of walk us through what we're talking about?
Sure, we have four rooms and so the rooms, uh, have up to two cameras in them with a standalone microphone in there. So there's different components that go into the setup of each room.
But only three microphones?
So, yes, there are four rooms and one does not require the audio recording in there.
Uh, Jake?
Yeah, does, um, the, is this gonna include any equipment for storing the data? And how long are we required to store it?
So this, uh, will go on to our software that we have for our body and squad cameras. This will go directly into that. And so that information is recorded, uh, on those servers, those same servers for our body camera and squad cameras, and it's retained, uh, per our policies depending on which type of interview that is for. Um, so we are planning as part of our body worn camera project, um, that will be upcoming, that's part of the CIP, to include, uh, plenty of storage space in a new server that we're purchasing for that.
How long are we required to keep the stored recordings?
So, uh, there's a couple of different policies in place as it relates to which type of evidence or which type of interview it is, which type of recording. Um, so most of those, uh, files are retained for at least a period of 270 days. And then if it is evidence related to a criminal investigation, those are actually retained indefinitely. So we're working through our policies, um, with IT to automate those processes with the, with our software.
So are we gonna, are we gonna keep those storage servers on-site here?
Those servers are on-site, yes. And then they're backed up through our, uh, through the, the backups that we have built in, through the IT department with offsite storage, I believe.
Any other question? No? Okay. All those in favor, oh, I need a two-thirds, so, so we are gonna do roll call because two-thirds. Sorry.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Jettzer?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassmann?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, next one.
Motion to approve resolution R-210-23, amending the 2023 debt and capital projects fund budgets, unspent capital funds, unused budget, budgeted interest payment and redirection of debt proceeds.
Second.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved.
Okay.
And we're, Misty will speak to this item.
Okay. Go ahead, Misty.
Thank you. So included in this resolution are three kind of buckets of budget amendments, all connected to our capital projects and our borrowing for how we pay for those projects. I'll mention now that if this is approved, all it's doing is shifting funding sources around. It does not change how much is allowed to be spent on the projects that we're talking about. It's just changing the funding sources. So there's three buckets. Uh, the first one is as we closed out the fire station constructions for the two new stations, uh, there were two funding sources that ended up not needing to be used. Uh, one was fund balance that we applied to that project and one was the sale of the old fire station. Um, so rather than, you know, just putting it back into the capital projects fund, I'm proposing that we use that to reduce the amount of debt that I have to borrow, uh, the next time around, which will probably be early in 2024. And so reduce that by about $2 million. Uh, we'll save the city interest cost, but then also issuance cost. The next bucket is I did not borrow in 2023 because many of the projects were delayed. Uh, so we had budgeted for an interest payment that obviously we didn't have to make because we didn't borrow the money yet. So I'm proposing to shift that interest payment budget to, to a project to also reduce the amount we need to borrow in 2024. And then the third one is some unspent borrowed money from 2020. Uh, now that that project is done, there's some borrowed money available that I need to find a new home for, so moving that to a different streets project.
Okay, any questions, comments? Oh, Jake?
Yeah, Misty, during the budget discussion, we had talked about, um, the, uh, the fund balance being right at 15%. Would it make sense to take any of this money and put it into fund balance so that we, uh, can get that bumped up a little bit? Because the 2024 budget is obviously going to be higher. So that 15% number might shrink a little bit.
So we, because, I don't know that I would necessarily recommend that. I think there's a more financial benefit of reducing how much we need to borrow because they all relate and that 15% is still within policy. And I suspect it will grow somewhat slowly, but will continue to grow as time goes on. So it's an option for sure. A council would rather do that, but that's not what I proposed.
Well, fine then.
Uh, Bill?
Uh, yeah, later on in the agenda, we're gonna talk about, um, a payment for Madison Gas and Electric from the North Fish Hatchery Road Project. Are you planning on, uh, using some of these funds for that or, or are those funds already secured? Just wondering if there's a relationship here.
Those funds, there's not. Uh, those funds are paid through by TID-10, which was outside of the part of the plant.
Any other comment, question? No? Okay, all, we need two, we need two-thirds again. So roll call, please.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Jettzer?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassmann?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Misty. Next, uh, Personal Committee?
We are meeting on December 5th at 4:00 PM and it'll be a jam-packed meeting. We're gonna take into account all those things that we passed in the budget and make sure that's, um, that's rolling for next year.
Thank you. Uh, Public Safety and Human Services.
Dave will, Dave, he's, he's got it.
Shannon, can you make the motion to approve the, uh, approve the operator's license for Noah?
Yes. Yes.
All right, are we doing it right now?
Yes.
Okay. Rock and roll, baby. All right. And move approval for resolution R-22423, accepting the, what, isn't it? That one? Oh, shoot. Hold on, let me get to it. I'm on the wrong thing. A motion to approve operator's license needed for special attention. Noah Johnson. We approved. Second. At our meeting.
Okay, who is gonna, do we need to have a discussion about this?
You can, if you want. I can fill you in.
You're good, okay. All those in favor of approving this license, yeah, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Motion carried. Okay, thank you, Shannon. So next, we move to the New Business Section. Okay? So this one is, uh, who's calling me in that time? Okay. Board of Public Works, so I don't know, Bill, do you want to introduce this one?
Sure, I will move approval of resolution R-21923, authorizing payment to MG&E for relocation of electric facilities for the Fish Hattery Road reconstruction project.
Second.
Okay, did the Board of Public Works approve this?
We did indeed.
Yes, okay, and Finance Committee?
Yes, the Finance Committee approved.
Thank you, so what is this?
For the North Fish Hattery Road project, MG&E had to relocate some electric facilities in addition to installing some new ones for signals and streetlights, et cetera. The costs for this work were put into the accounts payable at the end of 2021, but have not been paid. So this resolution is for the approval of payment to MG&E for their work on the project.
I, I have a question. Are we paying any interest and penalty because we are paying a one-year or two-year-old invoice?
Um, Misty?
No?
I don't know that.
Nope, they, as far as I know, they are not charging us interest or penalty.
Good to know, because it could be. Any other question? So my question is, you know, I want to ask, you know, how we prevent that this happen in the future? You know what I mean? We are paying a, an invoice, a bill that is two years old, so are we implementing some?
So this was discovered by existing staff that had been an error by previous staff that are no longer employed by the City of Pittsburgh. So we do not anticipate having additional issues. Our current staff is managing projects appropriately, staying on top of tasks and doing quite well. And then, of course, we also have financial controls in place that were adequate enough to obviously identify that there was this issue.
Okay, thank you. So, and we are paying this with TID number 10. So, okay. All those in favor of resolution R-219-23, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion carried, thank you. So next one is Finance Committee.
All right. Move to approve resolution R-221-23, amending the 2023 ARPA fund budget for urban tree inventory.
Second. Did Finance Committee approve?
The Finance Committee approved, yes.
So what is this?
Well, the council approved the funding for the urban tree inventory with ARPA funds of $10,000 for 2023. Then the 2024 ARPA fund budgeted $15,000 for the urban tree inventory for 2024. The Forestry Department would like to select WatchTell Tree Science to provide this work and to have a, have the work start in 2023. So this resolution is requesting to amend the 2023 ARPA fund budget and to recognize the $15,000 in the grant revenues to be used for additional costs for the tree inventory. So the two, the two, 2023 and 2024 being combined, are going to be combined for, I believe, a total of $25,000, based on the numbers, so that the project could be awarded soon, 2023.
Thank you. Jay?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, is the Forestry Department aware that it is now cold outside?
I can't, I can't answer that. We'll, we'll call up Scott.
Doing a tree inventory might be unpleasant. The other question is, Misty, oh!
Scott is?
Scott's there.
Scott?
Oh, he doesn't want to deal with that question.
I think he's trying to.
Yes, we, we are aware it's cold, we are aware it's cold, though. We're gonna start making ice for this one, actually.
All right, the, the other question I had is for Misty. So we've been spending a lot of money out of the ARPA fund, and, you know, as we've discussed before, the council approved way more money for projects out of that fund than there is money in that fund. Can we get an update at some point as to what's left and what the other projects are that we approved that haven't been paid for yet or haven't been funded? So that we can kind of think through our own priorities about what we want to do?
Yeah, so we're working with the mayor currently to come up with a schedule for the update to the investment plan. So that's something we usually do in the first few months of the year. So that schedule will hopefully be out to you guys shortly, and then there'll be updates in the next couple of months once we close the books for 2023.
Excellent.
It's coming. Okay. All those in favor of, oh, this is a two thirds, this is a.
Two thirds, yes.
Two thirds, so we need to do a roll call.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhert?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Jay.
Alder Jutzer?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion carried, thank you. So next, we move to. Oh, Jay.
Item four.
Okay, so Finance Committee, okay, yes, ready.
All set, all right. Move to approve resolution R-224-23, acceptance of COPS grant.
Second.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance Committee approved, and we have Deputy Chief Lehey here tonight.
And did Public Safety approve? Did you discuss this in Public Safety?
Yes.
Yes?
I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, sorry, yeah, I have to commission. Okay. So Matt?
So as most of you know, we were approved by the U.S. Department of Justice COPS Office for a grant of a total of $625,000 to assist the City of Pittsburgh fund five new police officers for the Police Department. The grant project start date is October 1st of 2023, end date of September 30th of 2028. The reason for this direct referral is there is a 45-day window from the date of the awarding of the grant, which was the 2nd of November. Those 45 days are going to be up in the middle of December, so we're asking the governing body of Pittsburgh to accept this grant. There's no financial stipulation on accepting the grant, and that will be addressed later in 2024. My hopes it is. If anybody has any questions on the grant or what the officers in the grant are going to be used for, feel free.
Uh, Jay?
Yeah, there's some things the council should be aware of with this. One is, by accepting this grant, we are increasing the number of authorized sworn officers that we have. So currently, we have 55. If we go, move forward with this, we will have 60, although we currently have five vacancies. So we will then have 10 vacancies. But I know that they are, the Police Department is diligently working on recruiting new staff. The other thing that we need to be aware of is this, this is tied to the referendum. So we are going to have to include funding for these officers in the referendum because there simply isn't going to be room within the levy limits to fund these officers. And if we accept the grant, we have to do it or else we have to send the money back. So if you support this, then you really have to support going to referendum to ask the voters to raise the taxes a little bit more than what they're paying right now because we just simply have to do this. So I support this, and I hope you will support it also and keep those things in mind as we move forward.
Any other question?
Gabriela, Bill, and Joe. Okay, Gabriela.
So after the grant period, I'm just asking these questions for public understanding, but so after the grant period is over, the total impact of the city budget is around $654,000? Is that, is that correct?
No.
Annually?
Annually, yes.
Annually, yes, yeah, yeah, not over the period, but just saying like, going forward after that three years is up and we have the, we have that, that cost that continues on, it's $654,000. Is that correct?
Kind of close.
Prob, it will probably be, because there'll be cost of living increases, so.
So it'll probably be like, I don't know, within $650,000 to $700,000.
Yes.
Yeah, $23,000. And then the grant stipulations, like, we have to accept all five, right? We can't.
We have to accept the total amount right now.
It has to be the full five.
And if there are any modifications, those requests need to be made to the COPS Office before any changes can be made on our end for that acceptance.
Great. So, you know, as we talk about, we're going to talk about the referendum tomorrow. I guess, let me step back for a second. So the Police Department faces extreme staffing challenges. And I, I, my heart goes out to you for how much stress you must be under in terms of how close to burnout I imagine the department is just given the fact that you've had so many vacancies and, and understaffed in a lot of different ways. So, and I, I'm very interested in working with the Department in any way to make that permanently fixed. But what sometimes the public doesn't understand is that we don't actually have local control over our budgets. Like, we, the state government stipulates that we, we, they limit us for what we can approve. So when people are talking about increasing, you know, the staffing, we are limited. And the one option for us is to go to referendum, which is why we're talking about that. But, but obviously, the addition of officers is not the only issue that this department faces because we have those vacancies, that, those continuing vacancies, which I'm sure there's a multifaceted problem that, but I have to imagine that we should discuss things like, do we need to increase salaries across the board or create longevity bonuses for people? Or those types of things that are going to have staffing, funding, general operating implications that I worry about. You know, there's only so much money that we can even do in the referendum. And I, I, the one thing I worry about is, you know, I'm not opposed to this, but I worry about if we lock in five sworn officers, it limits the flexibility for that staffing funding for increasing salaries or, or hiring command staff because I know for the 2024 request, the first request was for a, for a lieutenant, for a third lieutenant. So I know I'm, I'm saying a lot of things, but like, I just have concerns about us, our ability to like, maintain that, that general operating. It, locking us into five positions this early out seems like that could bite us and maybe even the department in later down the line and like, reduces the flexibility with what you can do with that amount of staffing. So feel free to respond, but I, you know.
So you, you say words like locking anybody in. We're not locked in to adding this five staff if we accept this grant tonight. We can say our financial picture has changed in August of 2024 if the referendum wouldn't pass. And we can say, we appreciate it. We have to give this money back because of our certain financial constraints. So I would be, as a citizen of Pittsburgh, I would want to, to tell this governing body through that referendum whether or not I wanted those. I understand your concerns, but if it were me, I'd be leaving it up to the citizens to make that call.
I have Bill, and then Joe, and then Jay. Okay, Jay, you're back. Bill?
Okay, so we currently have some vacancies. How many, how many positions, unfilled positions are in the 2024 budget right now? So we're talking about five sworn officers. Does that, and that's, you know, roughly $650,000 per year. Is that in the budget for 2024 or no?
Yes.
So if we, if we accept this grant, it's not going to cost us any more than we've already planned for?
No.
Correct, you're not authorizing any additional funding at this point in time by accepting this grant. What this resolution does is basically authorizes this, the Police Department through the governing body to tell the United States Department of Justice that we thank you for the grant award, and we are accepting it at this time. They have a period of time before they actually have to implement it. And in order to address the funding concerns that are rightfully being shared this after, this evening by council, the, the resolution basically would then direct staff to include the five police officers in any future referendum that the City Council elects to do, potentially in August, as we've been talking about. And then the department, if that referendum were to pass, you would see the department come forward with a budget amendment request at that point in time that would allow those five police officers to be added onto the department during the month of September in order to comply with the grant timelines that are out there. And so they'd be using a combination of grant funds and city funds in order to bring them on in September. And then, of course, with the past referendum, the funding would be there available in subsequent years because that's a recurring referendum dollar amount that's approved. So as Deputy Chief Lehey has indicated, the department does have flexibility after the acceptance if the financial picture changes. Because of a failed referendum, for instance, they can approach the Department of Justice and either decline the grant in full at that point in time, or perhaps, if there is a comfort level, maybe a modification to say two or three police officers. So I think at this point in time, really, all council is doing is preserving its option to proceed with this grant that would cover approximately one-third of the cost of the three police officers for a three-year period.
Joe?
Since Jay brought it up, in our assessment of staffing needs, where did, can, can somebody remind me where we came up with in terms of needs of the, of FPD?
Not sure I'm quite following the question exactly. So with, we had, obviously, there's both public safety departments, city public safety departments submitted, recommended staffing plans that were preliminary, preliminarily assessed by Baker-Tilly during the organizational staffing study. The department had, I think, 19 or 20 positions that were submitted there. I, I know there's, I think there's a problem with my button. So I rescind my previous statement earlier in the evening, Scott. My apologies, so. So this, I forget exactly how many police officers were, were requested through the budget process, but this is obviously, you know, a portion of what was requested from, from the PD that could be funded here. And of course, there could be other strategies. The lieutenants were mentioned earlier to potentially fill those ranks, you know. I'm not suggesting this is the only way, but, you know, perhaps at some point, a reclassification of existing role could be done, if need be, in order to accomplish that if, if it couldn't be added. So through the, through the lobby. Did that, did I answer your question? I mean, I'm, yeah, I don't, I don't feel like I, I nailed it, so my apologies.
Uh, Jay?
Yeah, I could drill down into Bill's question a little deeper. If, if, if we approve this tonight and if the referendum passes, I think it's likely the Police Department will come to us in September and say, hey, let's get ready to start recruiting these people. So that would require a budget amendment. And the, the year one amount that we would be paying is $267,000. That's for the whole year. So I'm guessing at that point, the department would probably come in with maybe an $80,000 or $90,000 request and say, here's what we need to get these people on for the last four months of the year. Now, that's, it doesn't really work that way because, you know, recruitment takes time, so they probably aren't going to hire some people September 1st. But that, I, I would think to be prepared, that's probably what they would ask for. So in the 2024 budget, I think our maximum that we would be asked for would be around $80,000 or $90,000. So that's, that's one of the things that we need to look at. And, you know, we'll, the money will probably be available because, you know, come January 1st, the Police Department isn't going to have those five positions filled yet. So, you know, there'll be some, some wages that will be accumulating that, until those positions are all filled. So it's not like we're going to have to go borrow money or do anything crazy for that. It's just, you know, we'll, we'll have to move some stuff around in different accounts, I suppose.
If I may, in addition to that potential option that Alder Allen has presented with vacancy savings, what was discussed at Finance Committee is that the council approved the $115,000 of contingency money during the budget process two weeks ago. So that could be another potential use of funding in order to, to cover the cost of those positions, if approved.
I have a question. So does this grant allow you to wait until September next year to start hiring the officer? Because I know that some grants are very strict. You know, I mean, now we accept that then, do you have like, that flexibility in the grant to start the hiring process, like nine months after, you know what I mean?
One of the things that the grant, the cops office has recently done is they've given you that five-year window to get this, the project done, which only includes, beyond the three years, we have to maintain all of the officers that we hired for 12 months afterwards. But anywhere in that five years, as long as we can get those 36 months of funding, it's fine.
Jim.
So Chief, are the officers obligated to just be community policing officers after the three years or four years?
So the programming portion of this grant application, which the five officers, we're requesting five officers to add to our staff, then, once those five officers are hired and trained and come onto the department, then what we'll do is we'll have a request from our officers for interest to become a neighborhood officer. Then we'll take those five officers. It's not going to be the ones that we just hired, more than likely, unless they're a lateral officer or something to that effect. But then we'll take those five officers and assign them to neighborhood positions, neighborhood officer positions.
Okay, but after three years, because...
We're under no obligation after the programming period ends to maintain neighborhood officers, but our department wants to maintain the neighborhood officer positions in perpetuity. That's why we're trying to increase our staff.
Right, and I get that, and along with Alder Gerhart's comments. I mean, we got a staffing plan from the chief, you know, for the next few years, so are you going to reevaluate that? Because that was asking for additional officers too, so if you want to keep them as...
Correct. Additional officers to be assigned to a whole host of different special assignments within the department.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, Gabriela.
In terms of, so I'm going to assume that, you know, we have the grant, this passes tonight, the referendum passes with a sufficient amount of money to fund this. So, but we would still need the money in this current calendar year to fill that gap, to hire them in, say, September. But there's also capital costs associated with those officers. So I assume each of those officers would need a car, and a body cam, and maybe other capital. Am I wrong in that, or is there...
Yeah, there's no obligation to assign these five officers a specific car for them. We have just our fleet of squad cars right now.
But would you need to increase the fleet to accommodate...
We're going to increase the fleet, more than likely, within the next, yeah. Every year, we'll probably request additional squad cars, just based upon our numbers.
So you might keep squads, older squad cars in, because I mean, I just, if you add five people, like, I guess my intuition would be that you would need additional cars immediately?
Eventually. I don't know if it's going to be an immediate need, but eventually, we would add additional squad cars.
It's something that I think we do need to look at, though, and prepare for, because, I mean, I assume body cams, I know that they're somewhat expensive, and I assume we'd want those for the officers, and what other capital costs are, are we going to have to work into the budget if we start hiring in September? I think we should think through that before we get to that point, assuming that the referendum passes.
Maybe body cameras?
Body cameras.
So we do build in the cost of outfitting a new police officer or any staff position, whether it's, you know, the equipment associated with being a police officer, firefighter, or somebody who needs a laptop, you know, in their office. So those are all factored into the cost to bring a new staff member in. When you see, for instance, in the budget process, and you have the new proposals for staff members, down in the table below, those costs are factored in. So as we look at bringing these potential hires on, again, looking at vacancy savings or the contingency could help backfill the costs associated with outfitting those particular officers, or potentially, if, say, one squad car was identified as a need, you know, perhaps that would be there. There could be, you know, for all we know, money's still available in the vehicle account that they have, you know, that could potentially offset the cost of a car as well. I mean, there are options available for us to take a look at, as it would relate to equipping the officer.
Jay.
Yeah, I just had two more points I wanted to make on this. The first one is, right now, our department, with all the authorized positions, is running about 1.6, 1.7 officers per thousand, which is significantly lower than what most of our neighboring communities are running, which is closer to two, 1.9 or two. So adding these five positions would get us in the 1.9 area. Again, you know, our population keeps growing, so by the time they're all hired, it will probably not be quite there, but, you know, we're doing what we can. The other thing, Matt, as I was reading the chief's memo, the last sentence really jumped out at me, which says this, "We are one of eight cities in Wisconsin awarded the grant, and we have been awarded the most funding out of the eight." Why do you think that is? What are the criteria that they use to make this award? And what is it about Pittsburgh that said, "We need five new officers"?
Talk of that ratio.
So I'm not sure how many officers all of the others, the other seven cities requested. They very well may have only requested one or two. But when we developed this plan, we, just like you stated, we recognize that we've been playing with less, less officers than is required in the city. And we recognize that how quickly our city is growing. And what we could do with 20 officers 20 years ago, we can't do that with 35 officers, patrol officers now. And what we expected our officers to do on a daily basis is to integrate their community policing, or the department's community policing strategies into their day-to-day patrol duties. That's not, that's not realistic, if you're going to be doing community policing right. So we're, this grant is just to simply get us where we need to be right now. And like, to your point, Alder Allen, by the time we get them hired and get them trained, we're still going to be probably taking two steps back from where we need to be. So this is an opportunity for the city of Pittsburgh to utilize this grant funding and recognize how good of an opportunity it is for not only the police department, but also for the city. So I would encourage you guys all to accept this grant, and hopefully, the referendum passes in August.
So thank you, Matt. I agree with you, this is an opportunity. And thank you for the police department to look for grant opportunity. I know that this one is contingency of matching funds, but I think that, you know, the police department is looking at, what are your needs, funding needs, and, you know, you are applying to grants. So that one is, this is a great opportunity for us.
Sure.
So.
Any other...
In terms of challenges with hiring, so you have, and part of my ignorance, but so like, you have for sworn officers, you have patrol officers, and then the community officers are the kind of different types of, like, would there be somebody that would be interested in applying for a community, like a neighborhood officer position?
So the neighborhood officer position, you'd be, you'd be hired as a police officer. You'd be hired as a patrol officer. And then you would be assigned, given, you would be most likely required to kind of do a quasi-special assignment, application, or interview process, to see if you're the right candidate for a neighborhood officer. Could be contingent upon your years of service, what you've done within the department, your public speaking ability, your work with the community as just a patrol officer, to see if you're worthy enough to be assigned to a neighborhood officer. So you couldn't just come in and apply for a neighborhood officer without already being a member of the police department.
But it gives you a special assignment.
It gives you a special assignment, and it essentially takes you out of those normal patrol officer duties. And you'd be assigned to a neighborhood, you'd be working, instead of answering your daily calls for service, you instead would be working with your community organizations, your neighborhood contacts, your apartment managers, your business owners, to identify community problems, quality of life issues, working on just overall crime concerns in your neighborhood, building that trust, building that legitimacy into the community, hopefully reducing violent crime in the process. Because these neighborhood officers would more than likely be assigned to our more challenged neighborhoods to make inroads and solve the neighborhood issues, instead of just responding like most of our patrol officers are asked to do right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so we are ready to, we don't need to say, so...
I would still request a roll call on this.
Okay, roll call.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Is he still there?
Aye.
Alder Jetser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you, Ned. So next, we move to, we have an option here. We have a resolution that I believe that we don't need to go to closed session, but Valerie is going to be talking to us about this, but I don't know, you want to go to a closed session for the next resolution or not? This one, I don't think that we need to go.
Well, let's ask the city attorney.
Why is it on the agenda, then?
Because it's an option, you know, we can go to close, but, you know. Valerie, what do you think?
Yeah, here's what I would suggest. I'm sorry, I'm hearing an echo. Very good. Okay. Why don't we introduce this and see how the council feels, and you can make the determination then. We've noticed it, because in order to have the ability to go into closed session, we have to notice it. That's required by law, so if the notice is there, if we want to take advantage of the closed session, we can, but we don't have to.
Okay, Randy, can you move forward this?
Yes, motion to move, or motion to approve Resolution R-215-23, approving a settlement from Huawei.
Huawei.
Thank you. Technologies for solar inverters installed on Pittsburgh municipal rooftops.
Second. Okay, so did, ah, no, this one, no. You didn't? No. Okay. Did this finance committee approve this or discuss this?
We deferred to, deferred to counsel.
Thank you. Okay, so now, Valerie.
Yeah, so Phil is, I think, on the line as well, and he can tell you a little bit more about this background, but speaking generally, this is a proposed settlement from the manufacturer of solar inverters that were installed in municipal rooftops that have, over the past recent history, failed. And unfortunately, the situation is that this particular manufacturer of these inverters is essentially dissolving all of its business in the United States and is exiting the market. And as a process of that dissolution, they have made us an offer to resolve kind of our outstanding claims. And so I'll let Phil speak a little bit more about the details, but, you know, the short pitch of it is, the offer before the city is going to be to accept this offer, which is less than what we're out, but it does not involve any litigation and any costs in attempting to obtain these funds, or reject this offer altogether, and, you know, pursue legal options, which would be, frankly, costly.
Phil, do you want to add anything?
I don't have much more to add. I did throw a lot of details into some supporting documentation that provided a little bit more of this background, some more of the details on how many kilowatt-hours and dollars have been involved over the past year or so of these inverters not functioning properly for Huawei. You know, right now, the big thing is, we just want to get this whole thing resolved, because we have, kind of until we figure out where we're at with this settlement, we're not moving forward with replacing a few inverters that are still failed right now, three on the library and one on the Public Works Maintenance Building. So it would just be nice to, you know, we're looking to move forward with this, so that we can make a decision on those as soon as possible.
Yeah, just to add to what both Valerie and Phil have indicated, the proposed settlement from Huawei is based on a formula on the number of extended warranties we had purchased, as well as the failure rate for the inverters throughout their manufacturer, which equated to approximately, I think, $11,671. Again, as we've indicated, that's certainly not what we are out at this point in time, but of course, to pursue a company who operates outside the US is going to be quite prohibitive and potentially unsuccessful. And we are working with our solar installer to identify the costs that will be necessary in order to replace the still non-functioning inverters. We've had some preliminary conversation with them, that it does appear as though they're willing to give us a discounted labor rate, and the new inverters that they are proposing to install, to get us back up and fully functioning, are from a brand that they've been utilizing for a number of years, from a company that has continued its operations in the US. So you'll more than likely see a forthcoming request to ultimately repair those inverters once we have a firm dollar amount. And the reason we aren't able to do that tonight is because we don't have it, but we do have time limits as to when we can reply back to Huawei's settlement.
Jay, and then Randy.
Yeah, how much did these inverters cost originally?
I could look up that figure. I think it was in the order of $2,000 or $3,000 per, but I don't have that figure in front of me.
So they're basically proposing to reimburse us for half the cost of what the things are?
Along those lines, yeah.
So if...
We were in an unfortunate situation, where we had about a 75% failure rate, and that just doesn't seem to be reflected throughout their customer base. We seem to get a bad batch.
All right.
But we're not given a different settlement based on that.
So what will a replacement inverter cost if we go, I know Chad said we don't have the exact number, but just roughly?
The estimate we got from Arch Electric, and they're the company that, they worked with Convergence Energy to install our solar panels back in 2017, they've continued providing ongoing operations and maintenance services. Arch Electric gave us an estimate of $6,000 per inverter. It's a different size, so the ones that have failed, they are 30-kilowatt inverters, and we'd be replacing those with 50-kilowatt inverters. So two could replace the three on top of the library, and then it's a one-to-one on the Public Works Building. So if they're $6,000 each, that would be $18,000 for three new inverters to replace the four that are currently out. And then, under $1,000 labor is what they've committed to.
I see. And then, the other questions I had were for Valerie. So this company is going out of business?
I don't know that they're going out of business.
They're just closing North American.
So Huawei Technologies faced some, and just to keep it relatively quick and vague, they faced some sanctions from the US government over concerns about data integrity and privacy, so they had operations in a number of different areas in the United States. The result of those sanctions is that ultimately Huawei, after a couple of years of dealing with them, decided to just pull out of the US entirely. So they still do operate in China and elsewhere, I believe, but this year, they announced they were going to close up their US operations.
And the last question I have is, do we have confidence that if we accept this agreement, they'll actually write us a check? And it will be good?
Yeah, who knows?
I think our likelihood of recovery is probably higher, in that instance, than the alternative. How's that?
All right. Oh, one, there's one other quick question. So we have three of their inverters that are still functioning? Do we have confidence those are going to continue to function?
So we have, we had 11 inverters replaced on four roofs. We have replaced, I believe we've replaced seven of the 11. So there are, sorry, I'm not remembering the exact numbers. We have four that are currently out, and seven that are functioning, just to put it simply. There are several that have not failed, and the ones that they've sent us are a newer generation that, you know, we have to trust that they're going to work. You know, we had a lifetime warranty that went through 2037, but obviously, that's no longer good once, once they've left US shores. So we don't really have much of a choice. They're not going to replace all the rest of them.
Got you.
Randy.
Question was asked and answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other question, comments? So do you want to go to closed session, or do you feel confident to, you can vote for this?
Oh, it looks like the council really wants to go to closed session.
No. I don't think so. Okay. So all of, all of in favor of Resolution R-215-23, approving the settlement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Phil.
Thanks.
Okay, so now, the next one, we need to go to closed session for sure. Okay, so we need to move the resolution.
You got to move the resolution, and then I'm sure they go to closed session.
Okay, so I need someone to move the resolution, and then...
I'll move approval of Resolution R-23023, authorizing a course of action in a multi-district litigation 3M and DuPont PFAS case.
Second.
And then I will move to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 1985-1G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is likely or become involved. Authorizing a course of action in the multi-district litigation 3M and DuPont PFAS case. Authorizing a course of action in the multi-district litigation 3M and DuPont PFAS case.
Okay.
Second.
Second? Okay, all of us in favor of going to a closed session, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries, so. Jay?
I'd move to go back into open session.
All of us in favor, oh, you need second. Okay, all of us in favor to reconvene into open session, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries. So, so now we, we have the resolution on the table. So how do we need to...
Well, I would move to clarify that we're going with option B,
Okay.
which is the option to opt out.
Second.
All of us in favor of approving the resolution with option B, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, thank you, Valerie and team.
Well, now we have to vote on the main motion.
What is the main motion?
R-23023.
Oh, all those, oh, yeah, yeah. All those in favor of approving the resolution R-230-23 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, because David is out. We are gonna call David back or not? Okay, so next, Valerie. Do we need to motion, yeah?
Oh, we have to class action.
Oh, can you explain this, and then we, the claim?
Yeah, I thought we were so close.
Great, well done.
Okay.
So there's a claim before you for a property damage to a resident's fence that resulted from a city wooded lot tree falling on a fence. This claim has been tendered to our insurance provider, and it did come back with a recommendation of a denial on the basis that they did not believe the city had liability in this case. And so staff recommends pursuant, and based on that recommendation, staff recommends that this council deny this claim.
I would add that the property owner was invited to attend council this evening and declined that invitation as well.
Uh, Jay?
Yeah, Valerie, I was noticing on the, on the notice of claim, it says this is 9/26/2022, but all the other documents are dated in September of 2023. Is that a mistake?
I suspect so. Although I didn't file, I'm not the one that filled out the notice of claim, so I can't speak for the property owner. But it's my understanding this is a recent event.
Okay. So with that in mind, I will move to deny the action, to deny the claim by Elaine Daly Bernbaum.
Second.
All of us in favor of denying the claim, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Valerie. So next, we move to the mayor report. So I don't have too much because I was sick, so I wasn't out too much time, you know what I mean? So, but I receive an annual report from the Groundswell Conservancy. They're celebrating 40 years. There is a nice, you know, article about the well that we approved and recognizing the city council, common council, and the staff for helping to change the ordinance. So if you want to see, it's here. And then I, to be honest, I, I didn't have the opportunity to be out too much because I was sick. I participated last night in the police facility meeting. The only comment that I'm gonna say, I don't think that it was well attended. I counted the, how many people attended, that there were new people, you know what I mean? Beside all of us, and it was around 10 people. So I wish that we can improve the attendance on these meetings. Or may, you know what I mean? But, but it was a good presentation. People, the people that attended, they asked good questions, so, you know, I hope that all of those questions are incorporated in the design, so. So that's it for me. So next, we are gonna start with the other reports. So we are gonna start with District 4.
On December 4th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., Jersey Mike's will be having their grand opening and ribbon-cutting event on that 6291 McKee Road. And I must say, growing up in Philadelphia, Cheese Steaks, Jersey Mike's is the closest that comes to the original Philadelphia cheesesteak.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's next week, isn't it?
Yeah, December 4th.
Thank you.
Mayor, I guess I also want to commend you and the other two, and Randy, people who spoke about the police facility going to visit the other facilities, you know, police facilities. I think it was important to give that perspective, like the chief was saying, from someone who's non-police. And I thought that was pretty powerful, so I commend you for that.
Thank you, Jim. Randy?
Just one note, the Chocolate Shop ice cream last week won a number of awards. I know they're based out of Madison, but we do have a shop here right across the street, by the Oasis in that area. And so I say buy local, and they're award-winning nationwide.
Or maybe ice cream of the year, I don't know.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Randy. Number three, Shannon.
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Oddly enough, I have nothing to report either.
Really?
It's true.
Whoa.
I know.
Pelletary, our recycling and trash pickup, they recently released a mobile app that you can add to your phone, and it reminds you, like through push notifications, that pickup is, or recycling pickup and trash pickup is about to happen. So anyway, if anyone's interested in that, I always forget things like that, and it's nice to have the app reminder. You can find it on their website. That's all, thanks.
Bill?
Yeah, last Monday, I attended the Transgender Day of Remembrance Interfaith Service. It was held at Memorial UCC up on Lacy Road. There were over 200 people in attendance. It was as inspiring as it was sad. Last, well, this year, I should say, thus far, 62 trans people have been murdered within the United States. And Wisconsin, unfortunately, has more than its fair share of those 62. There have been four murders of trans women of color in the state of Wisconsin in 2023, aged 28 to 35. I was at the PD facility meeting last night along with the mayor, Gabriella, Jim, Randy. Senator Melissa Egert was there. I guess not much more to add.
Oh, what about, have you been in McKee Farms Park? They are already installing the...
Yes, yeah, so the, in McKee Farms Park, there's a lot going on. So the basketball court has been repaved, and the hoops are back up. The parking lot is, I believe, still under construction, but asphalt has been laid, and there's, tennis courts are under construction, yes. And as well as the exercise equipment donated by, Adventure?
Adventure, yeah.
Yes. I guess on a more personal note, the council meeting, our next council meeting will be December 12th. That's my birthday, so I will be expecting lavish praise for the simple fact that I exist. All right, well, maybe we should have a cake.
We're singing Happy Birthday.
We should have a cake.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Bill. Joe?
Yeah, there is a free STD testing event at Joining Forces for Families, 2225 Allied Drive, apartment number two. Takes about 30 minutes. So everybody out there, make sure you're safe. I wanna give a shout-out to my son for getting first couple of college admissions. He's a senior at Verona High School. He's looking in the Chicago area. And then the Centro Espino banquet, I know it's not specific to District 1, but is gonna be taking place on December 7th at Menona Terrace. And tickets are available on miscentro.org. It's their 40th anniversary. Centro is as old as Pittsburgh, yes.
Yeah, I know, yeah. So, okay, thank you, everyone. Any additional announcement? You want to mention that or not?
Yeah, I could mention, when Alder Gerhardt mentioned about the Pelletary mobile app, there was an issue reported to the city from the weekend in which some lawn leaf bags were not picked up by Pelletary because they had been tied. Pelletary does ask that those bags remain untied in effort to be more efficient and safe for their staff as they pick those up. They did agree to come back tomorrow for any of the bags that had been tagged as non-suitable for pickup over the last go-around. So anybody who had their bags out that were not picked up, they will be by tomorrow to pick those up.
And it's true, because it happened to my bag. So, Jay?
So I, I saw that email, and because I don't bag leaves, I don't understand what, what's going on. Do, do they actually have somebody who dumps the bags into a truck?
Yeah.
And then what do they do with the bags?
Depends, it depends. If they are like a plastic bag, they leave it there in your driveway. If they are like a recycle bag, you know, like a paper bag, they take them. I don't know what they do, but they don't leave those.
Mayor, we talked about this in RCC. We're the only community that Pelletary does this for. No one, they don't do it for anyone else, which is why it's such like an inefficient system.
The leaf pickup, they don't do?
Pelletary doesn't do it for any other community. It's just us on our request from our contract, and they would rather not do it, from my understanding. We're up for, our contracts are renewed next year, so we've been talking to RCC. And I hope that probably works as well about potentially figuring out an alternative solution. Like, a lot of municipalities have like a vacuum truck, and they suck it up themselves, and they, they, and maybe we need to look at doing that because whatever Pelletary is doing is, it's not working. And also having a whole bunch of plastic bags.
Right.
Like, that's not, that's really unsustainable.
Well, how about everyone who has leaves get a mulching lawnmower?
Okay, I think this is for another conversation. Okay, so the next committee, next committee of the whole meeting is tomorrow, 29. We are gonna be discussing referendum. And then the next council meeting is December 12th. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So we are adjourning at 10:28.